Hello and welcome to the Town Meeting Program. It is Friday, the 8th of January 2021. Nice to be able to say 2021 and not the other year which shall not be named. We're brought to you by Cordova Wireless Communications, your local cellphone and wireless data provider, which provides your local on-demand talk show. And today, we had a request from Gay Wellman of Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska to talk about some upcoming events that they have, which are online events now, of course, because of COVID. But ironically, that has actually opened up extra opportunities for people to partake of their various seminars and educational opportunities. So she's going to tell us what's coming up in the near future, some pretty interesting topics, having to do with folks that have Alzheimer's or other types of dementia. And in some cases, the things that you learn can apply in other areas with other conditions, as we'll hear as the show evolves. So we hope that you enjoy the show. A reminder, by the way, that our Town Meeting talk shows now go on our YouTube channel as well. After we're done on the air, Robbie gets them recorded and uploaded to youtube.com/cordovatv. So if you're catching the beginning of this show at a time when it's not convenient for you to spend the next half hour or so listening in, or later, if you want to pass the show on to somebody else who doesn't even necessarily live in Cordova, then point them to that YouTube channel, and they can find the Town Meeting Program for January 8. So with no further delay, we bring you Gay Wellman of Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska on today's edition of the Town Meeting Talk Show. Gay Wellman, nice to have you on with us again. It's always an interesting conversation. I hope the first week of the new year is finding you well.
Okay, thank you so much, JR, for this opportunity. I really appreciate it. It's always a pleasure for me to talk to the folks there in Cordova. And I understand that there's some folks that are actually going to be contacting me to get some support directly, which is great. So this is kind of a good time for me to be online like this.
Well, we are a wonderful town, after all.
Yes, we certainly are. And I very much miss going out there, being able to come and visit.
Yeah. So what is it that you kind of want to get out there these days?
Okay, well, we've got several things. One is that the webinar that's coming up, it's actually going to be on Saturday, this coming Saturday, from 1:00 to 2:30. It's the second part of a two-part, possibly even three-part series that we're doing on activities of daily living, with wonderful tips and ideas for how best to help people learn how to handle these kinds of activities with their loved ones as the dementia process advances or moves forward. It's also good for folks that maybe you're just beginning the journey, you're just starting, your loved one still is able to do most of the things that we call activities of daily living. And those are basically five things, one being bathing, another being grooming, dressing, undressing, that sort of activity, toileting, they call it there, eating, and that's the eating, the actual process of eating, not the preparing, but the eating process. And then mobility, being able to transfer, walk around, get up and down from bed and stuff. And at some point during this dementia, if what your loved one has is a progressive dementia, at some point, all of these activities are going to be requiring more and more assistance. And the more you understand what works and what doesn't work, the less battle there's going to be in these things. There's a wonderful video that we sometimes show that's called Bathing Without Battles. And it's got some great scenes of what happens when you don't do it right, and also what can happen when you do, that there are approaches that one can use that really help a person not feel like they're being attacked. Of course, none of us want to be attacked.
No, I haven't found it to be an awful lot of fun. What are the logistics of a webinar now, for folks that aren't familiar with communicating that way?
Okay, great. What we're doing, you know, because of COVID, and actually, prior to that, I've been doing it online for many years now. But right now, what our agency is using is the platform called Zoom, which I think many people have become familiar with during this day of, these days of when we aren't supposed to get together in big groups. And it's been working really well. All of our education specialists, which is what my title is, that's four, five, six of us now, that we're all doing it by Zoom. Prior to this COVID thing, most of the others were doing it in person, in whatever community they were in. The other education specialist that's doing it online for years is Amber Smith from Juno, who has been doing what we call the professional webinars. And those are targeting the folks that are helping us in our assisted living homes and long-term care, or the professionals that are coming into your home to do day services. However, it's always, those are always open to family caregivers as well, anybody else is more than happy to come into those. They're basically the same presentations that we all do, but the target is different. So we'll be talking about it a little bit differently. The Zoom process is a pretty easy process, actually. We now have developed, we have online on our website, we have a calendar that is called Classes and Events Around the State. And we put out a list for all the things that we're doing in any quarter. So there's a new one that's out now that you can find online. And I think I sent you one, JR. I think I sent you a copy of that.
Yeah, I see that.
Which lists the various webinars we do for families, the general ones that are called Caregiving 101s. And they cover things like this Activity of Daily Living that we'll be doing on Saturday. And then there's one that's going to be on Friday, the 15th, on communication tips. On the 19th, there's going to be Overview of Alzheimer's. Some of these are during the day on weekdays, and some are evening ones. That one, the Overview of Alzheimer's, is actually going to be from 5:30 to 7:00 on the 19th. And there's various other ones.
So in terms of being able to get the information kind of in a batch, then, is it ALZAlaska.org is the website?
Exactly. Yeah, if they go there, they should be able to find that relatively easily. And of course, if they can't, they can always give me a call or let me know, and I can help them walk through it.
And what phone number are you using?
I use the 907-822-5620.
Okay, good.
That's a direct line.
And you know, and it was interesting, I remember you saying the last time we chatted that while, you know, dealing with COVID and having to do things online was new and, you know, maybe had its growing pains, that actually, it's sort of opened things up in a way. You find that it's potentially a way to reach more people than you might otherwise?
Absolutely, absolutely. And the other thing that's really exciting for me is that there's several programs that I was never able to do. I didn't, you know, I didn't have the time or the ability to do them. But there's something called Memory Cafe, which one of our education specialists runs, and she's doing that online. And there's a great deal of fun with that. That's something that you can participate in with your loved one. And they just do fun things. There's music, there's fun games, there's different kinds of things that they do in that. And it's always a good time. And that happens on Thursday. Well, they'll find the schedule on that. Art Links is another one that I couldn't do. And again, another one of our specialists is really good with art, and she does a beautiful job of helping folks. And that's something that long-term care facilities or assisted living homes can look up, hook up with. A lot of her people are coming to us from that way, and so that they have it online, you know, they can show it, and the participants can participate in that. And she gives them a list ahead of time of what supplies they're going to need, that sort of thing, and what the topic's going to be. And that's like once a month as well. Actually, it's twice a month, excuse me.
All right, so again...
And then there's Brain Games.
Oh, go ahead.
The same kind of thing. So these are the activities, Voices of Alaska Frontier, any of you who'd like to sing. Again, these are ones that were being done in person prior to COVID, and now they're being offered online. And I don't see those stopping, even when we start to be able to do them in person again. It's been so well-received, because anybody who has access to the internet, and I know that for some folks in rural areas, they don't have good internet connection. So what you want to do is go to your agency, whoever's helping you. And they can, you know, can do it as a group, if you can, you know, with distancing and the masks and all that. So again, there's a selection of different things. We also have, on this classes and events, you can see the wide range of different kinds of support groups that are being offered, not just by us, but like some of the other states, some of the other agencies have support groups.
All right.
And those of you that are dealing with someone with dementia, one of the big important things for you is to get support. This is not something you can do by yourself. I'm sorry, you just can't. It's, I mean, obviously, you can, but you're going to put yourself under a great deal of stress if you try to. And why not get support? Why not get help? Why not talk to some of us that have been doing this education for a while? Because there are skills that you can develop that will help you through this. I can't emphasize that enough.
Well, and again, your phone number there, 822-5620. You've always been very open about being glad to hear from folks. And so this webinar, again, the Activities of Daily Living, what was the time for that?
That's from 1:00 to 2:30 on Saturday.
Okay, the 9th.
And they can register online very easily. Actually, I won't be doing it, but I'll be there, obviously. But Linda Shepherd, who's another specialist of ours, is going to be doing the presentation, and she does a beautiful job. Last month, we targeted bathing. This month, it'll be grooming, dressing, and then as far as we can get into the toileting and eating and mobility. If we don't finish up, we'll do another one, because this is such an important piece. And as I said, your loved one doesn't need to, you don't have to be to the point where you're doing, you're helping them with everything, because there's things you can do right now, in the beginning stages, that will make a big difference. If you start learning what you need, how do you decide what kind of support does your loved one need? And that's part of what we're looking at, is helping you to determine how much help, because you can give too much help.
Yeah.
And that's not a good thing, you know, trying to do it all, you know, trying to do it for them. You don't want to do that. We all need to have some say in what's happening for us. So this is really a partnership we're talking about, not a caregiving, but a partnership, care partnering.
Okay. So Saturday, January 9th, again, details on how to register and participate at ALZAlaska.org. If internet is not the best option for you, the phone number 822-5620. We're talking with Gay Wellman of Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska. And you said something to me before we got started about getting a new grant or mini grant. What was that about?
Okay, the mini grant. This is something we've actually had for a long time. And I can send you more information about that, JR, if you want, because it's a really great program. It's just one that we're managing. Our agency manages for the state. We get a bucket of money that we can distribute to families that have someone who has a certified dementia of some sort. They have to have a diagnosis of dementia of some sort, doesn't have to be Alzheimer's, whatever it is. They can be eligible, with that, they can be eligible for up to $2,500 a year. So each year, you can be eligible for $25 help in getting supplies or equipment, or just anything, pretty much anything that helps you, that you can show helps you keep your loved one at home, or helps them wherever they are.
And what would the application process be like? Or is there one? How does it work for people to participate?
There is. It's very, very simple. It's a one-pager. The main thing is that you have the diagnosis, that you have documentation of a diagnosis. And then it's just a one-pager that you decide what you want, and you have to do the research to say where you want to get it from, whatever it is, who the supplier is going to be. And then you put that down, and then you have just a couple sentences that say why this is going to be important to you. Like, one of the ones that we used up here in Kanning Lake was, somebody needed wood, and they didn't have the funds to get the wood and soap to heat their home. And so they found a supplier of wood, and put the name down and contact information, and said why this was going to be helpful, obviously, to keep their house warm, you know. And that was it. And then send the application in. There's a process that goes through. There's a committee that looks at it and decides whether it's valid or not. And then you get your money. You don't have to use the whole $500, but why not use it? And you can use it in various different things. People have gotten things like walk-in tubs, or adjusted their, put in a shower, walk-in showers, generators, washing machines, dryers, you name it, beds, and then smaller things, supplies, you know, the daily supplies that they may need, whether they're using Depends or any of those sorts of things that they can't get any other way. If you have another resource for it, fine, go for that. But this is like a backup for that.
And that same phone number, if people want to know more about it?
Absolutely. And I can send you information, if you've got a way of putting that on the phone. I can send you the information about the application and things. But I'm happy to do that. If you have email, it's easy to send that out.
Yeah.
Definitely calling.
Well, there's it.
And you can actually find that information on our website as well. It's called the Mini Grant.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that. Mini Grant, and again, ALZAlaska.org. You can somehow surf that up. It's pretty obvious.
Right, it's pretty obvious. It comes up right away. You may have to figure out how to, where to find things, but it's not, it's a pretty good website.
Okay.
It's pretty friendly.
And then, looking ahead a little bit, you mentioned you've got a workshop in February that's a little more on the sensitive side. So what's coming up then?
Okay, what's coming up is a website, it's actually a professional webinar, but I've done them for families as well. It's called Intimacy, Sexuality, and Dementia. This is one of those areas that we're finding more and more people are saying, you know what? We need help with this. It's folks that are partners, you know, they're intimate partnerships. Dementia plays havoc with that, whether their loved one is in an assisted living home or whether they're living at home. And so partners really, caregivers who are partners, who have intimate partners, really need some additional support. We have, I've just started a, a couple months ago, I started a support group for partners specifically. And that was a request that we had from some folks, saying, hey, you know, these other support groups are fine, but you know, there's some of these issues we need to talk about with others that are trying to work out how to deal with their husband or wife, or whoever their partner is. There's a whole lot of issues that come up in assisted living homes and long-term care facilities that really need, facilities need help with this. It's not something we talk about very easily. You know, how many of us talk about sex in front of the table, you know, at the dinner table? Not too many. One of the things that we've learned is that it's not just sexuality that we're talking about. There's at least five different types of intimacy. And that's one of the things that we talk about in this webinar, that all of us need to become aware of. You know, we have intellectual intimacy needs, we have emotional intimacy needs, we have spiritual intimacy needs, we have social intimacy needs, as well as the physical or sexual, you know, whatever level you're talking about. So it's really important as caregivers that we become aware of, how are we getting those particular kinds of needs and that? Some of us, it's our partner does it all. That's who we've depended on with our partner. Most of us don't have a partner that's quite that good. They can fill all those needs, if you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know, I've had three different husbands, and each one of them is wonderful, was good at their level, whatever. And I'm just saying that, you know, but I had to reach out for other people to help me with some of these things.
Sure.
You know, I needed people that I could talk to, maybe, you know, I'm just saying that as an example, but maybe I had people. So anyway, that's one of the things we talk about in this webinar. We'll also be looking at, how do we help folks deal with the challenges that come up? How does a daughter deal with a father who has dementia, who's now thinking you are his wife?
Oops.
How do we deal with a caregiver in a facility who, when she's trying to help a woman or a man, for that matter, you know, a man or a woman, for that matter, but she's trying to help them bathe, and they take it as a message that you're ready to have more than that?
Yeah.
How do we help somebody, you know, the man you're helping them bathe, and they reach for your boobs?
Yeah.
It's not uncommon at all. And so giving caregivers some heads up of how to help that person through that, without being punitive, without being horrified. And that means we have to, as caregivers, we have to get in touch with our feelings. What's our feeling about homosexuality? That's a big issue.
Yeah.
In caregiving places. And who knows what's going to come out of, you know, maybe, maybe your mother has always been, you know, heterosexual in her interactions.
Right.
But who's to say what's going to get uncovered in this process of dementia? We talk about how a person who's never sworn in their adult life, suddenly, you know, seems like they suddenly start swearing like troopers. You hear that a lot. Same thing applies to this issue of our sexual needs. And if, in the process of my developing my dementia, this is one of the things I'm becoming aware of, the avenues for getting some of these intimacy, other intimacy needs is cut off from me. I can no longer do the intellectual. I can no longer be social with people. I can no longer follow my spiritual guiders. My brain is not allowing me to do that anymore. My emotional needs aren't being met other ways, because my brain's not allowing me. What's left for me is that basic, you know, that animal nature, so to speak.
Sure, sure. No, that's right at the, right at the base of the pyramid there, yeah, obviously.
Exactly. And so that's what's left. And we all need support. We all need connection. We all, I don't care who you are, I don't know what your brain capacity is, we all need human connection, or connection with something in our universe. That's why pets are so valuable. And that's why warm, fuzzy things later on are so valuable.
Now, you say that this webinar itself is, if, is it open to the general public, or is it really just designed for, you know, professional providers?
It's designed for professional, but this one, particular one, is the way I'm presenting it is going to be, it's the way it's listed, is it's for a professional webinar. It's a professional webinar. And it's just going to be an hour. You know, we're not going to get into great details, but we're hoping that this will allow us to begin the conversation. And we'll be doing more of this. I have done the same kind of presentation for families. And there's just a different way of, way you present it. But it's basically the same information, the same encouragement to look at our issues.
Okay, so that's...
Caregivers, whoever they are.
So that's coming out...
Need to be looking at these issues for themselves.
That's coming out in February. I assume details are also available on the website or via phone call, like all these other things?
Yeah, it's listed in a separate little box, that it's called Professional Webinars. And this is the one that's going to be on Intimacy, Sexuality. It's going to be on February 16, from 12 to 1. And again, if this is something you're interested in, please let me know. I am talking about starting another support group for partners. And I'm haven't decided on a date or time yet. It's probably going to be during a weekday, during the week, during the daylight, daytime, let's put it that way. The one I have right now is on Saturdays, and it's pretty well full. So I'm starting another one. I have four or five people that have already signed up for that. I'd like a few more. But if that's something you're interested in, let me know. Or if you're just interested in getting into further conversation about this. I just did a talk on the radio. I had a delightful time sharing with the young man. It's a topic we talk about. There's no right or wrong. There are things that work better. There's are some guidelines. But each of us needs to be making some choices around this, and not be avoiding. It's a conversation we need to have.
Yeah, obviously, you know, or then you're pretty well guaranteed to just have chaos as a result. Preparation is, you know, I guess that'd be another question, if people are in a situation where that is not a huge challenge right now, but is likely to become so in the future, is it worth sitting in on something like this to begin to get some preparation?
Absolutely. This is with any of these. Yeah, absolutely. You know, it's worth getting some ideas around this, because this is not something that's, you know, you may not have to deal with it. It may be fine. The other thing about dementia is that for some people, they become, because of whatever's going on in their brain, the chemical, whatever's happening, they become hypersexual, or they become the other way.
Right.
Where they may have been warm and cuddly and loving and everything else, and now they don't want to be touched. And that can be just as hard for a loved one to deal with.
Oh, absolutely.
And again, if they are in a home, they may not know who you are when you come to visit. And they're going to get connected with people in that home.
Right. You know, the...
And so how do you deal with it?
That multi-part, that multi-part program on HBO, actually, that years ago dealt with that subject, where sometimes in facilities, they would end up developing relationships with other people in the facility and forgetting who their actual partner or their actual family were. So...
Exactly.
Yeah, that's...
A lot of the movies that we see, that we, you know, you can find different movies. There's one from a long time ago, I think it's called Being There, or something like that. It was several years ago, you can find still, that talks about that, where the woman decides, she puts herself in a home, and then she forgets who her husband is.
Yeah.
And that doesn't happen overnight, and it's not necessarily going to happen for you, but it possibly, probably will, especially if you're not there all the time. And so that's something that agencies need to be working with. How are they going to deal with when they see, oh, here's a husband who's making, you know, who's getting connected, or a wife who's getting connected with another person. And it can be another, you know, a woman with a woman.
Sure.
And how are you going to deal with that? You walk in, you know, you come and visit, and here your father is, who was married to your mom, who may or may not still be alive, and he's, you know, he's in a, holding hands with, cuddling with another man?
Right.
And that's going to happen.
Sure. And it's all, you know, again, preparation, preparation goes a long way toward, hopefully, you know, I mean, the more prepared you are, you reduce your chances for being shocked by these things. It doesn't necessarily make them easier to deal with, but it can take the surprise element out of it.
Exactly. And it can give you some tools for how are you going to get through this for yourself. Because our concern, as much as anything, my concern anyway, you know, many of us, is to help you as the care partner, whether you're the professional care partner or whether you're a family care partner, to move through this journey, because this is not an easy journey. Things are changing. Change happens anyway for all of us, you know, as we get older. But dementia has another whole piece to that. And there's ways of helping you get the right attitude and get prepared, so that it's not such a shock. And you can begin enjoying life again. It doesn't have to be the end. It doesn't have to be. You may, you're going to move through a period where it's going to feel like that. But we can help you get through that, and give you some tips on how to make it, so you can begin finding the joy.
Well, it's certainly, you know, it's one of the things that's always amazing about talking with you, is that it, your passion for this subject never seems to wane. Has it been, what's it been like trying to navigate the pandemic? I mean, we talked about how maybe it's opened up some webinar opportunities, but just overall, what kind of a year was 2020 for you?
Okay, it's been, it's been a tough one. Not so much for me, as it, in some ways it has been for me, but for other people, especially folks who are dealing with this. One of the things that's happened is that they haven't been able to get care, you know, assistance in caregiving. So they haven't had people coming into their home to give them respite.
Right.
Or to help them even with housework. Now, that's beginning to open up a little bit, but certainly in the beginning, one of the things we're seeing, and one of the things that our agency actually is beginning to take a look at and beginning to recognize, this is a hole we've had, is that we have not been providing enough mental health support.
Yeah.
We don't have a list of good counselors. Our support, now, my background is in psychiatric nursing, so I've been able to do some of that on my own, but for the folks that I'm in touch with. But this, we need to have that. We need to give support for our families. And right now, with this COVID, especially as it's wearing, you know, it's been wearing on us for such a long time. I have several caregivers who are at their wit's end.
Yeah.
And they desperately need more support than we're able to provide. And so the more people that understand what's going on, and it's for all of us, you know, most of us are experiencing that, right?
Sure.
And so being able to reach out, to get support, whether it's from a good friend, or whether it's from a spiritual guide, or whoever it is, we need to be supporting each other. And we've also been on top of the COVID, we've had all this hatred and division going on in our country.
Yeah.
That's not helping at all.
No, I don't imagine. I mean, it's certainly...
I don't care who, what side you're on, if there's a side you had.
Contributed to the weirdness of the year. Yeah.
Exactly.
There's no question there. So...
Pow, pow, pow. You know, every time you turn around, there's something else that's going on. It's like, whoa, is it ever going to stop?
I just, I learned to not predict anything at all. I don't know, actually, if I'm ever going to bother trying to predict anything again after 2020.
Right. That's one of the things, in some ways, it's a, it can be seen as a gift. You know, when things get really bad, like they've been this year, really horrible, what it brings out is either the best... it brings out is either the best in human nature, or the worst.
Yeah.
And I like to be on the side of the best, myself. I don't know about you. So I'm reaching for whatever I can to stay positive, to stay, and I'm not talking about Pollyanna-type positivity.
Yeah.
But what do we need to do, what do I need to do as a human being to keep my humanity, that part of my humanity that's important to me?
Yeah.
Which is love.
Sure.
How do I, how do I combat all that other energy that's coming around? And this experience with dementia gives us the tools for doing that, whether it's with your loved one who has dementia, or whether it's with someone else who's going off on some trip that they don't need to be going on.
Mm-hmm.
That these tools give you the way to keep yourself from being drawn into that negativity.
Well, as we kind of wind down to the back end of our time slot here, what would you kind of like to leave us with? We talked about the webinar, we talked about the mini-grant opportunity, this intimacy workshop in February. Anybody, by the way, that is not hearing the show when it's on the radio, this will of course be on our YouTube channel as well, youtube.com/CordovaTV. But what, is there anything else kind of here at the end that's on your mind?
My main thing is reach out, reach out, reach out, reach out. Don't try to do this by yourself. Whether you're, whether you're working in a facility, or whether you're working, you know, whether you're at home, trying to do this. And if you're a friend, give us a call. You may not be doing the direct care, but what you can offer is critical. And the more knowledge you have about what our families are going through, what the person with dementia is going through, what it is, the more information you have, the more education you have, the better support you're going to be able to provide. And again, as I said, not just for the families that have dementia, but all of our fam, everyone is feeling the pinch, so to speak.
Yeah. So one more time then, the contact information, best ways for people to reach out to you?
Yeah, it's 907-822-5620. The other way is through my email, which is GWellman@ALZAlaska.org.
And that's the same address for the website, ALZAlaska.org?
Yes, that's the same ending part. But it would be just my first name, my first initial, my first name, G, for gay.
Yeah.
And then Wellman, my last name, W-B-L-L-N-A-N, at ALZAlaska.org.
And it sounds like that's a pretty feature-rich website, so people are welcome to visit that.
Absolutely.
And you know, you make it sound like, you know, that poking around on there a little bit, you might learn some, you might actually learn some skills, or get some ideas for dealing with things beyond just a situation involving dementia, which is, which is an interesting...
Absolutely.
Tangent.
Absolutely. You know, brain change is, brain change is, brain change. I don't care if it's coming because of the distress of what we're going through emotionally with this COVID, and with the whole mess that's going on politically in our country, or whether it's because a person is alcoholic, is an alcoholic, or connected to drugs, whether it's temporary, or, you know, it doesn't matter. Brain change is, brain change is, brain change. It can be a stroke, it could be anything that's causing our brain to change. Working too much on internet, playing the stupid game, getting addicted to things, okay?
Yeah.
This is going to help. You deal with someone who's addicted to feelings. You know, maybe you have someone in your life who likes to stay dementia. I'm not saying it's purposeful, but who's depressed all the time. This can help you with that.
Hmm. Very interesting thought. Number of different challenging situations that aren't necessarily just related to Alzheimer's or other dementias.
That's right.
And the coping strategies may have broader appeal. So AL, what was it one more time?
Oh, the website is ALZAlaska.org. Now, you're not going to necessarily find that kind of information on that site, but if you give me a contact, mine is G-A-W, G-A, G, excuse me, I'm getting caught here. GWellman@ALZAlaska.org. Okay, that's my, that's my, that's my...
Your email.
My email.
Yeah.
And I'd be quick to answer those if I'm around.
It's very informative, as always, Gay, and we're talking about the possibility of maybe chatting monthly. We'll see how that evolves.
That'd be great.
In the meantime, thank you for reaching out to us. Please feel free to do so. Again, stay on the line, by the way, but for the purposes of the program, we'll say farewell. And I'm glad you could join us.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for this opportunity. As I said, I always enjoy it.
Gay Wellman with Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska, always a delightful guest, very knowledgeable, here on the Town Meeting Program, brought to you by Cordova Wireless Communications, which not only provides those valuable services over cell phones with the wireless data and the talking and all of that, but also keeps the money right here in town. So those dollars that you spend aren't being shipped out to Valdez, or Anchorage, or who knows where else. Real important in these pandemic times, especially. If you ever have a topic you'd like covered on this show, a guest you'd like us to interview, anything like that, just let us know. For now, we will make up all missed programming in the 10:00 AM hour, and wish you a great weekend. Thanks for tuning into Town Meeting.